Good afternoon and welcome to our first meeting of August. I believe the summer is almost over. Time to go back to school and I guess parents are happy about that. We welcome everybody in our audience today and those of you watching us on our Electric City Television. The emigration tonight will be given by Councilmember Beatrice Thompson. In respect to the flag, it will be given by Councilmember Rick Lockridge. Please rise.
May we pray. Dear heavenly Father, we are so thankful for this day. We're so thankful, dear God, that the privileges that you've given us to assemble in these council chambers once more. We're thankful for the citizens who are here out of interest in their community. Dear God, as we deliberate tonight, we ask for your strength and your wisdom that we might make decisions that are in the behalf of our community and pleasing to you. We thank you, Lord, for our dedicated staff team, the hard-working employees who work every day to make this a better place for all of us to live. We're so thankful, God, for our city, for our county, for our state and our nation. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got a couple of special recognitions tonight. I'm gonna ask Chief Stewart to come up and help me out here. Our first one is a retirement. I'm gonna let the chief take the lead on this. Lieutenant Greg Hawkins.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I'd like to ask Lieutenant Hawkins to come forward and his wife also, Debbie Hawkins. I'll give you a little bit of brief. Lieutenant Hawkins is retiring this week. He has chosen the end of his career but is also gonna be joining the Williamston Police Department, I believe, as a school resource officer in that agency. So he will continue on with his career in law enforcement. But just to give you a little bit of brief about Lieutenant Hawkins and I feel like I'm losing one of my family members doing this. We've worked together, both of us our careers, laughed together, cried together, been called out in the middle of the night together as detectives and shared quite a lot. But Greg started with the PD in 1988 and has proved to be and been an invaluable source of knowledge and he gives all his patrol officers a common sense approach to law enforcement. He has proven to be able to motivate and encourage to strive for them all to do the best in law enforcement. In 1995, Lieutenant Hawkins was then promoted to Sergeant in Investigations. And for most of us that know Greg very well, he's been an invaluable source to this agency in the fact of his investigations of crimes against persons, felony assaults, robberies. But his specialty always known here at this police department was for white collar crime. And he's known throughout the banking industry for his investigation to investigate forgeries, internal thefts, financial transaction card fraud. Also in 2008, Lieutenant Hawkins was then promoted to Lieutenant within the Patrol Division. And at that time, we worked together very closely. He also filled in as a department head at one time as support services in the absence of a captain in 2008. And I probably could go on and share lots of stories that me and Greg have shared throughout the years, the probably the most infamous and I think off the top of my head is the night we were working second shift when we had the shooting up at Appleby's. And it was just a chaotic scene and both of us went up there and kind of tried to restore order that night and it led to, I don't know Greg, a six-month investigation maybe, but it was ordeal. Greg, on behalf of the city and the police department especially, just say we're really gonna miss you. And we've got some plaques that we want to present to you tonight, show our appreciation. The mayor has one from the city.
Thank you, Lieutenant. And let me just read this. It says presented to Greg Hawkins in appreciation for 26 years of loyal and dedicated service to the city of Anderson and this date, August 15th. Appreciate that. That's your plaque. And another parting gift. It's wrapped pretty. Hope you enjoy it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You wanna say something, Lieutenant?
Thank you. Thank all you guys in the back that are here. I'm gonna miss all of you. I've enjoyed 25 years here. I thank the city manager, council. It's been a good place to work. Anderson treats us employees well. I've always been happy here. I never looked for another job. I just want y'all to know that till, you know, till I retired. And I'm gonna miss this, I'm gonna miss the people. Got a lot of friends here. They're still gonna be my friend after I leave, but I won't be working with them. But I've really enjoyed it. Thank y'all.
I'd also like to present you a plaque from the police department. It states in appreciation for your outstanding service and dedication given to the Anderson Police Department for 26 years of faithful service. You'll be greatly missed. Good luck in future endeavors.
Congratulations. Thank you for your service. Thank you.
Congratulations. I've been retired. It's a good thing. You enjoy it.
Thank you for sharing.
This is Mayor, his stepfather is one of the councilors, and they're Tom Adams. So we appreciate having Tom with us tonight.
Thank you, Tom. Thanks for coming.
Good day, Chief.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to call the following individuals down to assist me tonight. Lieutenant Kramer, who's a retired Anderson Police Officer. If you come on down, he'll be assisting me tonight in the penning of his son, Lieutenant David Kramer. I'd also like to call Captain Robert Rivas down. He'll be assisting in penning the badge of Sergeant Steve Dooley. Our first promotion we'll have tonight, we'll have three promotions, Captain, a Lieutenant and a Sergeant. First person to step forward is Captain Doyle Carpenter. I'll give you a little bit of brief on Captain Carpenter. He joined the PD in 1994 and 1997. He was assigned to the Community Patrol Division as a public housing officer. And some of his duties include managing the public housing, school resource officer, and he served as a negotiator on a special response team. He also in 2002 was a detective, as an investigator in property crimes within our detective division. In 2006, he was promoted as a shift sergeant within detention and in 2007 was promoted to Lieutenant of the Detention Center. As detention captain, he will be in charge of supervising five detention teams in the jail totaling 30 personnel under his command. He attributes the Detention Center's success and professionalism due to his professional employees. Our second promotion will be Lieutenant David Kramer. Ask Lieutenant Kramer to step forward. Lieutenant Kramer joined the PD approximately 15 years ago. He served 10 years within the Patrol Division and rose to the rank of Sergeant within the Detention Center in 2009. Sergeant Kramer has also served as an investigator. He also serves as our Internal Affairs Investigator currently. He's on the crisis negotiation team and assists the SWAT unit. Kramer was also selected Officer of the Year in 2003 and he is a third-generation police officer. Lieutenant Kramer's current duty now will be assigned to the Administrative Services Division. Our last promotion here will be Sergeant Steve Dooley. Sergeant Field, step forward. Sergeant Dooley joined the police department in 2003. He has previous employment experience with the town of Williamston and the Greenville County Detention Center. He was promoted to Corporal in 2005 and was a member of our Street Crimes Unit in 2006. In 2007, he joined our Narcotics Unit. Sergeant Dooley will be noted, he has very thoroughness and attention to detail. He has excellent investigative skills and it comes highly recommended by any law enforcement agency. Sergeant Dooley will be our new and current Internal Affairs Investigator and will investigate all complaints received by the PD in a fair and impartial manner. Also, it's noted that Dooley received the Good Conduct Medal in 2011. What we'll do now is we'll call as we're gonna replace their badges, their current badges. Lieutenant Kramer's gonna assist me and his sons and Captain Rivas will assist me. We'll replace their current shields and put the new shields on and we'll swear them in. Okay, as a part of your new office and newly elected position, as you step forward, raise your right hand, repeat after me. On my honor, I will never betray my badge.
On my honor, I will never betray my badge.
My integrity, my character, or the public trust.
My integrity, my character, or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold.
I will always have the courage to hold.
Myself and others accountable for our actions.
Myself and others accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
My community.
My community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
The minutes of our July 22nd meeting have been distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Not hearing any, do I have a motion to approve? First by Mr. Roberts, second by Mr. Chapman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the minutes of July 2nd pass unanimously. There are three items of old business. The first item is request second and third readings of ordinance 13-09 to rezone 2006 West Hampton Street from REM 10 multifamily residential to neighborhood professional. Mr. Moore.
Mr. Mayor and Council, again, you gave first reading this matter on July 22nd. Your Planning Commission gave you unanimous approval on July the 9th. And what it is, a request by Anderson Interfaith Ministries and they'll switch this dwelling for additional office space for their operations. So we'd recommend it to you on second and third reading.
Any further comments? We had a good discussion in the last meeting.
Mayor, I knew that we passed this on second reading.
First by Dr. Thompson, second by Mr. Roberts. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously on the second reading.
I move that it be adopted on the third and final reading.
First by Mr. Lockridge.
Second.
Second by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously on the third and final reading. Our second item of old business is request second and third reading of ordinance 13-10 to annex and zone 610-29 through 647, 651 through 655 and 691, South Carolina 28 Bypass. Attacks the map of 124-00-02-011 and also 124-0002-0142, GC General Commercial.
Gave you the hard part, all the numbers, Mr. Moore. The common sense went on that one is that's the Walmart property on 28 Bypass and other adjoining businesses, Zaxby's, Aaron's, Marathon Gas, Taco Bell and Kentucky Fried Chicken. Approximately 36 acres total. That went for the Planning Commission on July night for unanimous approval. You gave first reading on July 22nd. So with tonight, the city is prepared to begin service immediately upon your adoption. We recommend second, third reading.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
I move we adopt this on the second reading.
First by Mr. Anderson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Horvath. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously on the second reading.
I move adoption on third and final reading.
First by Dr. Thompson, second by Mr. Lockridge. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. It passes unanimously on the third and final reading. Our next item is request second and third reading of ordinance 13-11 to adopt the 2012 International Code's Congress requirements for building construction. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You did give first reading of this on at your July 22nd meeting, but I'd be remiss if I didn't again thank Councilman Roberts and Councilman Chapman with their building and architectural experience and experience looking at this and making some recommendations. So it comes to you from them. We also have the South Carolina Building Codes Council does require that you adopt this code if you're using it. So we're doing that. It is plumbing, building, mechanical, gas, energy, fire and property maintenance. You last updated this in 2008, so this is the most recent updating. We'd recommend it to you on second and third reading tonight.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions, discussion?
Make a motion, we adopt this on the second reading.
First by Mr. Roberts.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
It passes 7-1 on the second reading.
I move that we adopt it on the third reading.
First by Mr. Lockridge.
Second.
Second by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes on the third and final reading, 7-1. Have a couple of items of new business and that first item is request consideration of an ordinance to rezone 450 Sayer Street from REM 10 multifamily residential to NC Neighborhood Commercial.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have Maurice McKenzie here if you have any detailed questions. But this was an automotive service and repair business. It did unfortunately burn. The owner would like to rebuild. It was a non-conforming use on that location on Sayer Street. Again, looking at it, it is surrounded by light industrial and single-family and multifamily, so the neighborhood commercial would be appropriate in our, in this case. And so it was considered and unanimously approved by the Planning Commission on August 6th. So we'd recommend it to you tonight on first reading.
Swear, that's in my district and I have talked with this young man who's been dispiring and he wants to replace it and make it a better place there in the Commerce District. And so I approve, I want approval for this recommendation.
First by Dr. Thompson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lockridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously on the first reading.
Let me just got a curiosity. On this map, there's a bunch of little red circles. What is that?
Those are red dots? Street lights? Is that a street light over there?
Normally it's something here that or manholes or fire hydrants. We'll get to that.
It's probably streetlights, manholes or fire hydrants, but we'll get you an explanation. Thank you for...
Our next item is request consideration on appointment to the Board of Architectural Review. Mr. Moore.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Robert Meckey who'd served on the BAR for a number of years representing the West Side Historic District has moved outside the district. We believe we were fortunate in that Mr. Bill Johnson wished to fill that capacity. Mr. Johnson resides at 106 Webb Street and has been in the process of conducting major innovation to that house in the historic district. You've seen his application and so unless you have some questions, Maurice knows, again, know him well, we'd recommend he take Robert Meckey's place on the BAR.
Any questions from Council? Mr. Horvath.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to thank Robert Meckey for serving all the years that he did. I've known him for a long time and I appreciate what all he did to help this committee. And I make a motion that we approve Mr. Johnson.
First by Mr. Horvath.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Also want to thank Mr. Johnson for... Is Mr. Johnson here? No. His public service to our committee. Our next item is request consideration on appointment to the Downtown Development Commission. Mr. Moore.
Again, a couple of appointments to consider, but only one tonight. The downtown resident for the Downtown Development Commission, Angie Gilstrap. You do have a two-term limit on this particular commission. Her term has expired. Tammy Wilmore has requested to fill that position. She's been through several leadership opportunities with the city. We certainly recommend her. Again, this commission is one that advocates and serves as advisors to the council on issues regarding economic growth, kind of sense of place for downtown. So we use them quite often as a sounding board. We'd like for you to ask that you appoint her tonight for that, for a term, three-year term. But also while you're thinking about it, if you'll notice Jim Lovinggood from Blue Ridge, he served two terms. His has expired. So if you'd be thinking about, we don't have a recommendation at this time, someone to fill his term. So again, we'd ask you to appoint Tammy Wilmore to the Downtown Development Commission as a downtown resident.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Make a motion, we accept Tammy Wilmore.
Second.
First by Mr. Chapman, second by Mr. Roberts. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we thank Ms. Wilmore. She's been very involved in several different things in the community since she's moved here, so appreciate her public service too. Our fourth item of new business is request consideration of a construction contract for Westview Cemetery expansion. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was looking to see which parts of our team, are they on the second row there, Kerry and Adam and Chris? That's all for on this particular matter. This is finally the expansion for the Westview Cemetery. We have a board over here, a lot of you have come by and seen that. But let me just describe for you again, the public. The Westview Cemetery is 22.98 acres. There are currently 17.2 acres that have been developed and sold. There are only two remaining unsold lots in Westview. And so this is approximately seven acres of land for this expansion and will add 2,551 grave sites. You may remember that we approached you and you approved for the city team to do this in phases. The first phase is gonna be 138,000. And we did get the land cleared. Probably taught us a valuable lesson that this might be better bid out. It was really a bigger job than we were equipped to handle. We estimated that the total cost with the city doing it, because we had to rent certain equipment, 368,000 and some odd, and it'd take us five months. What we did is we bid it out. We had a substantial amount of interest, as you can see, six bidders. The low bid was Thrift Brothers, who've done a substantial amount of work, including Lenny Park lately. Their low bid was 235,041.91 under what we could have done it for. It gets it done within 90 days and if you'll see, we're projecting based on the marketing, 40 grave lots to be sold, 20 burials a year and an estimated $44,000 annual revenue. We would advance this money for the project from Perpetual Care Fund and should be, the Perpetual Care Fund should be paid back, made whole in five to six years based on these projections. And then from that point on, the Perpetual Care Fund should grow. So we think this is a great project, not only for the community and the needs in the community, but also it makes good sense for the city financially to do that. So we'd recommend tonight, what you're being requested to do is award the low bid to Thrift Brothers Incorporated for 235,041.91.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Yes, Mayor, I really am excited about this project. It's, Westview Cemetery is an old cemetery and for many, many years has been the burial place for African-Americans in the city. And so they'll be very happy to see this improvement, the addition of the grave sites and hopefully a beautification of that project. So I would like to move that we award this bid to Thrift Brothers.
First by Dr. Thompson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lockridge. Discussion?
Is that a question?
Mr. Kirven?
This, once this is completed, you'll have 2,500 new grave sites. Has any thought been given to how you actually market those in terms of, are you just gonna open up the entire 2,500 all at one time and anybody that wants a grave site picks anywhere in there? Are you gonna do it in phases and try to keep it sort of grouped together over time or how?
Well, that's a good question. Haven't thought about that one. We have done brochures. We have met with all the funeral homes, but I assume that once it's open, families get to choose kind of where they want to be in the whole site.
My concern would be that over time, I mean, you projected out at 40 a year, that's like 63 years. But I think over time, there's a chance that the demand may diminish and so it may... so it may stretch out a lot longer than that. But you may want to give some thought to whether you ought to do it in phases and sections as opposed to just the whole thing, you know, doesn't matter.
Certainly can, and it's a good question. We also have, because of the demand, we do have some of the funeral homes are thinking about buying blocks of 40 in advance for...
Well, I guess my point is that, you know, 30 years from now, if all of a sudden you have very little demand for that particular location, then you may want to take the remaining areas and make it more into a beautified park-like area as opposed to having one or two here and there, you know? So just think about it.
Okay, we'll get back to that.
Just make some advice on that.
Thank you, Steve.
I think that's a good point, Steve, that you're not just have them scattered here and there, but to phase them so that so many lots will be sold in this section, and if there's land left for beautification, that would be fine.
Well, the advantage is the economy's a scale to build it all, but certainly it would be green space, and you can see that, say how the kind of three phases are. You could reserve those and actually sell by phase. Let's let our people, we'll talk to the funeral home people in kind of way, what Steve's saying.
Think about the maintenance aspects of it too.
Yes, you're right on that one.
Actually, people have already asked me about how much are the grave sites, when are they going to be open? So hopefully you're right, Steve, that the man would not be quite as great, but...
Oh, I think it'll be fine for a while, but over time, it may, you know, it may slack off a little bit.
Maybe.
Good comments, good discussion. Anything else? Have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Good addition to the city. Our next item is request consideration of a final design bidding and construction administrative contract with Design South Professionals Incorporated for the Old North Anderson Sanitary Sewer and Stormwater Improvements. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Mayor and Council, a couple of council meetings ago, you awarded a job about 500 and some odd thousand for replacement of water lines in this district. And that was a project that did Hunter Henry on the east side and on the west side, did several other streets. Got them somewhere, just skipping, but that's okay. I mean, and during all this rain, we've also experienced other issues in the area. We knew the sewer system was bad. It has some unfavorable grades where sewer's trying to run uphill, and that causes a problem. There's a number of undersized pipes, and we've had a history of pipe clogging. Most of that system's 50 years old and was going to need to be replaced. On top of all that, the stormwater system that mainly runs down Hunter Drive and then down through some private property to the Five Points area there has also experienced some problems. It's been in there, it was a drainage basin put in to eliminate some erosion years and years ago. We're not sure how all it got in there, but it's having some joint problems and other issues. And a lot of you stopped by again to see the plan. We have water sewer. Kind of the bottom line, there's an opportunity for some economies of scale to bid this out, and whether the current contractor, who is capable of doing the others, might bid on that. We believe that he probably would, and some others can bid as well, but also for the convenience and the infrastructure for the community over there. We hate to go in there and do water lines, be back a year later and tear all that stuff up again, because again, what you're going to have is, as far as the water system, there's going to be 120 residential meters impacted as we put the six-inch ductal iron in. As far as the sewer, 3,600 feet of eight-inch sewer line, 20 manholes, and those are all need to be reconnected by the city. And then the other part is 1,100 feet of 48-inch reinforced concrete pipe to handle that drainage. So that's kind of the project, and what we're doing tonight is, we'd like to, we believe on the time schedule, that the water contractor will be completed by sometime December, the first of the year. So if we can get this designed and bid out, and hopefully awarded while either they're in there or the next person comes in, it would certainly get all that done sometime next year, and then when the roads are finally repaved, because they'll all probably need repaving when all this is done, and then whatever's done in the median will be out of there, infrastructure will be totally improved, and we won't have to go back in and redo it. So what we're asking for tonight, our team, and our team consists again of our public works guys up there, we're talking about, along with Jeff. It's been a nice coordinated effort between utilities and public works. I appreciate them working together, but we also need the assistance of a professional engineering firm. So the recommendation tonight for you is to retain Design South. They did the water work, they've already done a good bit of the work out there in there. They were judged to be one of the most qualified in the R F Q process. The contract for them would be 114,500. We estimate another $9,500 in permitting, so there are some permits. I would say, on this project, to give you an idea, we're estimating the magnitude of the stormwater and the sewer to be roughly 600,000 each. So, I mean, when all said and done, this is about like Lenny, it's going to be about a million five, but it's something we need to do. I mean, again, those folks do not have good water, their sewer's not good, and they're experiencing sinkholes in the median, so we'd like to give an address. So that's the first recommendation. Be back to you again if you approve this. You'll probably hear back from us in November with some of the design criteria and the bids.
Thanks, sir. Comments, questions?
I just wanted to thank the staff, because I thought today's kind of little get-together to try to get some more detailed questions, I think it solidified a lot of the things that needed to happen, and obviously, it's rebuilding the entire infrastructure from all three, so I think it's a, I just wanted to thank you for...
Thank you. We thank Buck, I mean, we got, of course, we got some construction...
I did it last week, and I agree with...
And we want everybody to have an opportunity. It's pretty complex what's going to take place out there.
Yeah, and you either go out and do it now, or you're going to do it later, so you might want to do it all done at one time.
And this is right in, actually, Rick's backyard, literally.
Literally.
Front yard. And if you approve this, as soon as we get a little further down the engineering road and know what we're going to do, because I know Councilman Chapman always asks if we're going to do saw borings, and we are, because we don't know what's really under that pipe. Once we get all that and get a little better handle, we'll update you, but we'll also have a community meeting so we can enlighten the residents there what better to expect. This will be a, probably a messy project in there.
Good, Mr. Harbin?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think one of the things Mr. Moore said was most important is the impact on the community, because it is going to, you know, I had an opportunity to meet last week, and then I had a chance over the weekend to go over there and actually look exactly where everything is going to be going, and I think it's a great idea to have a meeting with the community, because it's going to inconvenience them for quite some time. And also, when I was over there, I got to realize, it's not just a straight water line or sewer line or a, there's a lot of different things to get it all the way down to the Five Points area. And, you know, with that, I think we need expert advice that, you know, that we've had a relationship with in the past, so I'd like to make a motion, we approve.
First by Mr. Harbin.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lockridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously.
Thank you, we'll keep you abreast.
Thank you, thank you, guys, appreciate it. Last item of new business is request consideration of a resolution and infrastructure reimbursement agreement with William Epstein. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to turn it over to Frankie, if you've probably heard enough from me, but before he starts, again, we're fortunate on this council have a lot of expertise, and we do have two attorneys, and we appreciate Councilman Curvin weighing in on some issues with Frankie and working to help us get this done. I think this is a great agreement for Mr. Epstein and the city. Mr. Epstein has always been city-friendly with his developments, and we appreciate what he's done, so this will allow him to participate in our infrastructure program if you approve it. So with that, Frankie, you can discuss.
All right, basically, before his resolution, infrastructure reimbursement agreement, this we've come up with, we've been, and we discussed this previously in executive session, we've been working with Mr. Epstein for a number of years, and on this particular project, he annexed 32 acres near Liberty Highway and Clinton Boulevard in 1998, and as a result of that, we were able not only to get his property, get other property. Prior to that, we had agreed, if he would annex it, we'd build a road in that area, basically behind Walmart toward the, what is going to be the East-West Connector. We let a contract for that road for about $280,000 in 1998, and for one reason or another, through no fault of the city, it was not built. Since then, Mr. Epstein has invested a good bit in building a road and parts of another road, although some other people have participated, and we have all along informed him that he would be able to participate in our reimbursement program. The result of this is basically a combination of all of those basic agreements or assurances that we've given him over the past in return for what he's done. He anticipates doing more infrastructure reimbursement, and this agreement calls for a supplemental agreement, at which time we would know how much more he has invested. But the essence of this is our agreement to pay the amount we originally going to use to build the road, plus additional reimbursement for additional infrastructure improvements that he makes to the property. It would be reimbursed to him, that portion after the initial payment of the 280. The initial would begin five years, at least five years from now, and be for 10 years, and would be based upon 45% of the property tax revenues that the city receives from the property. That's the basic agreement, and I think that pretty much summarizes what we've done. I do appreciate Mr. Curvin's assistance in getting it at least to the point where we think there's no, there will be no misunderstandings in the future as to what will be done.
Good, thank you. We've kicked this one around a couple times. Any further questions, comments?
I make a motion, we approve this.
Have a first by Mr. Harbin.
Second.
Second by Dr. Thompson. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the infrastructure reimbursement agreement with Mr. Epstein passes unanimously. Thanks to all involved. Administrative briefing, Mr. Moore?
Just to counter, Mr. Mayor, we have a couple things you can see down there. I know a lot of y'all do participate in the Sister Cities. There's a lunch and learn on the 22nd at Tucker's, and the midnight flight is on here for August 30th, which is kind of the start of the Labor Day weekend, which means that Celebrate Anderson will be on Sunday.
Sunday.
That weekend, and then Labor Day of fall, and Frankup of college football, so busy end of August and start of September.
Interesting time.
Phil Tages, you got your mic.
Mr. Lockridge, Mr. Lockridge, that's all we have.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, Ron Dean, we are so grateful to see Mr. Abagadi back with us tonight, and we just thank him, and hope he's going to continue to do well, Mr. Abagadi. Thank you for coming, I'll shoot my hand.
Do we get a motion? Dr. Thompson, we get a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we stand adjourned.